We'll go ahead and call the January 27th special meeting of the City of Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. We'll go ahead and get things rolling. I believe that we do not have a consent calendar at this time to review, correct?
There's not.
Oh, we need to do roll call.
Well, then, let's start with roll call. Good call.
Stephenson?
Here.
Ambie?
Here.
Schlothauer?
Here.
Carrie? I see you.
The mic's off, Carrie.
You're on mute. She says she's here by waving.
Okay. Avis?
Here. All right. Any citizen issues this evening? This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on issues that are not a part of the agenda. If you wish to comment on issues that are planned for future meetings, we would ask that you would hold that for those meetings. Any citizen issues? Okay, seeing none. We have no unfinished or old business, correct?
That is true.
This will bring us to the main portion of this evening, which is our public hearing. So we'll go ahead and open public hearing. Pleasant View Annexation. Mr. Manley to present.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. John Manley, Planning Manager here with the City of Post Falls. Learning how to use this device. We'll just use. For some reason, PowerPoint's not going. May need to get... It's there. I will stop share.
We need one of those cats hanging from a wire that says hang in there momentarily.
We'll be right back. See, I should've gone to my computer.
Which one is it? There's two different ones.
Should be only one. There we go.
We are rocking and rolling, folks.
There we go.
And John?
Yes?
John, if I could just, I know there was some discussion about Mr. Kimball, and I was hoping that the Chair could address that before we get started.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I believe for the record that Commissioner Kimball is recluse himself not being a part of this meeting and is thus taking part as a regular citizen. Is that correct, Field?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. We'll get that in the record, then. Mr. Manley.
So here we are. So this is the Pleasant View Annexation, case file ANNX 5-2020. The owners are listed in Exhibit S5 in your staff report. So this is an unusual annexation application. It's one of the reasons why the city staff is the applicant. You have multiple owners that are consenting for annexation. And it is in an attempt to potentially create an urban renewal district. So they kind of work hand in hand, the annexation and the potentiality of creating an urban renewal district. And in this, there was a discussion of what potential zones would go with this request, and that's where you see that the 254 acres, that's all the ownership's involved in the annexation, some two, is requesting that as a designation with this request. The location, as you see here, is along the Pleasant View corridor. It is along the east side, south of Prairie and north of Celtae Way. Prairie Avenue is, if I can get the mouse working here, there we go, right along that side with Celtae Way being the southern limits right at this location. Water and sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls for this area at the time of development. Or otherwise agreed upon. What we see here, though, is we have some... What we're doing here at the Planning and Zoning Commission is we're forwarding a recommendation of zoning. We're not looking at the annexation at this point in time. We're just looking at, is the request for industrial compatible with this criteria? And so we're looking at the future land use map, is it consistent with it? We look at goals and policies in the comp plan. We also look at street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and any other sort of geographic or natural features that should be considered with this. So the next slides, I'm going to kind of dive into these three criteria points. I would like to acknowledge we don't have any specific community plans for the corridor, and there's no known geographic or natural features that would prohibit development in this area, although fairly rocky. So what we have here is, this is current zoning map. What you see off to the east is our R1S, Prairie Meadows Development Area. That's east of Maguire. And then we have the Montrose Residential Neighborhood. What you see in the yellow, that's a single-family development, a PUD development. Celtae Way, where you see the red, that's the Community Commercial Zoning District. And the gray is other industrial zones that are along that Celtae Way corridor. Here we have the future land use designation. You can see that east of Pleasant View Road, but west of Corbin, that's that pink area, that's a business commercial designation. And the idea of this on the future land use map is, it was unknown what development was going to go where exactly. So you end up having to the west, we know that we have industrial-esque type uses currently out there. Assuming east of Pleasant View, you'd have some transitional zones and some mitigation-type buffering-type development pattern as you go towards the single-family developments that are east in Maguire. What you see there in the blue, those are, it's a transitional designation that's in the future land use map, which is open to a lot of transitional uses to help blend in the higher-intense corridor that would occur along Pleasant View to the single-family subdivisions east of Maguire. Looking at the business commercial designation in the future land use map, we see that it's pretty open. It wants to provide for a variety of services, retail, professional office. It entertains light industrial, artisan manufacturing, but also, as you see here, the highlighted per-focus area. The reason for that was, whenever you try to create a finite box of what should go where, then you end up almost always getting it wrong. But there are some principles, some guiding principles that are embedded into these focus areas to help allow other types of uses be entertained for a zoning request as part of an annexation. And these are the focus areas that's in the comp plan. Where we currently are with this request is the West Prairie area. And this is the sheet that's within your staff report that we're looking at, and it entertains a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial uses for, within this area. And so although not specifically called out in the business commercial, it does allude to the fact that industrial uses could be possible within that future land use designation. So before I go into these, I do want to know, there was a question about what that means as far as industrial uses being allowed. So I'm gonna see if I can pull up. This is our land use table that's within the, our city code for what kind of uses could be allowed. And so in industrial, it's not a heavy industrial zone. You know, a heavy industrial zone, you would see like an asphalt plant, blast furnace smelter potentially, or some of these more higher-intense uses being allowed outright. With the industrial zone, it's more like a, just a, kind of like a tech zone a little bit. So you, but it does allow more manufacturing than a pure tech zone. So you have like food and beverage manufacturing, meat products, dairy, those are all outright. But then as you go down to some of the, like a sawmill, paper manufacturing, something that would emit more particulates in the air, you start seeing the heavier uses being allowed only through a special use permit, which we would then do another public notice period, go before the Planning and Zoning Commission to see if that would be a good fit in the neighborhoods where your more smaller-type manufacturers would be permitted outright in that industrial, less intrusive. So looking at some of these comp plan goals to go along with that, we're still in that set of three criteria that I mentioned earlier. Some of the goals are to grow and sustain a balanced, resilient economy, provide community prosperity and fiscal health, look at establishing of different types of land uses for communities' needs for long-term sustainability. Also on this is the caveat, looking at clean air, soils, river, and minimizing light and noise pollution citywide. So how this kind of works into this project and proposal is, more than likely, down the road, this corridor is going to develop. You see these smaller lots, this, that's the Big Horn Development in the county. So there's options going forward to develop in the county of some sort, with treatment of septic and whatnot that way with development, or would it be better serving within municipal services and that method? And so by annexing and getting it on sanitary sewer, you improve the likelihood of better water quality and better treatment of the aquifer in that manner. So that would be kind of meeting some of the goals for that aspect of that. Dealing with the economics aspect, obviously, if you have industrial zoning, you have provide the opportunity of creating jobs and a job base to help fuel and feed, you know, the local communities' opportunities within Post Falls. So that's, those are the highlights of kind of how that meets those, that first three criteria. The staff report goes into a lot more detail. The other criteria is commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. That dovetails into why this was, sorry if I keep going back and forth on this, but why the business commercial was designated, because Pleasant View Road is a higher classified road. And we do know that as this gets developed from Pleasant View over to Maguire, you're going to get that transitional. And why you saw here, you see here implementing zones for that area, you don't see R1 as an opportunity, because the intent of this future land use is you would get a higher development intense pattern through this with a mix of uses. So that would still be possible. East of this area, you more than likely would get some additional requests that would feed into that, those implementing zones. Help. And then you may see some other single-family homes, development patterns go in this area where you see in the blue. The next one is limited in neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away. And that would be true in this case for the plan for the future land use map, moving further away from the intense uses on Pleasant View. This request isn't necessarily germane to this criteria, but you can kind of see the overall methodology and the tie-in to the future land use map. The last one, the industrial zoning is, there is a direct nexus for this aspect of it, because that's what's being asked for with this request, is for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes that may be suited away from residential zoning, and specifically single-family residential zoning. So looking at the area context, I'll try to get this full screen again. What you hear, I've highlighted the general area of the request. And in blue, what I have are interchanges that are in Idaho. You got the Beck Road Interchange, you got the I-90 interchange, and you got a future, it's a bridging-the-valley interchange that'll tie in to Highway 53, which will provide good north-south connectivity and good east-west connectivity through 53 and I-90 for that corridor. Zooming in a little bit, along that Pleasant View corridor, you have other routes, the Midway, Pole Line, Grange, and Prairie, which will serve as east-west connectors. Not all of them will be sufficient for truck routes, but would be provided avenues for residents that live to the east to jobs in the workplace that may be up and down that Pleasant View corridor. So there's some good access for the employment base to these areas, and there's good truck routes and good access north-south, east-west, as presented in that previous slide. So staff would view the industrial proposal very complimentary to that corridor of Pleasant View in those aspects, and that would meet that criteria. We did route some agencies, as you see here. We did receive comments from the police department. They were neutral. So do you have any questions from staff at this point pertaining to the industrial zoning request as part of the annexation going before city council?
So I'm just a little confused. This is a annexation, I mean, it's Pleasant View annexation, but we're only doing a zone change recommendation tonight?
You're just looking at whether or not you've, as a commission, does industrial meet the standards, and would you recommend that zoning district to council as part of their consideration for annexation? So council will be considering the annexation.
And we're, so we're just looking at the zoning designation tonight? Okay, okay.
Yeah. Other topics like sewer and water and other aspects, I may have delved into a little bit more detail if it was part of the annexation request, because it becomes a lot more, how are you going to service this as part of the annexation? Here, we're really just focusing on the zoning aspect of the application.
Okay. I do have one other question. Do you know how much undeveloped industrial property, industrial zone property we currently have in the city, at Post Falls?
I currently don't have that at my fingertips. I do know that, and I'll go back to this slide, there's a bunch of different types of industrial, and how they service this area would function differently. So the Riverbend Commerce Park, which you see south in I-90, is more of your higher-end industrial with, they have design standards, it's going to meet a higher price point. That's why you end up with like ALKIA out there, and you have some of the high-end tech companies out there. We also have on the northeast quadrant, Tech Mix Park. That's more of established for like your technology-industrial campus-like settings. So that zoning district meets another market niche of industrial. What we have been lacking to some degree is a potentiality for a little bit lower niche than, let's just say, Riverbend. It would still be allowed along Pleasant View, but a lot of individuals who don't want to necessarily meet the CCNR and the design standards of Riverbend, if they're looking for a place, where is that place in Post Falls? Pleasant View would provide that opportunity that's currently not in Post Falls.
Okay, okay. That makes sense.
Yeah. And John, you had pulled up the other map. You don't have to pull it back up. But I think one of the confusions or one of the things that you did address is the fact that even though it is industrial, we're not talking about heavy industry, we're talking about industrial. So if I am a maverick, or if I am a, you know, a manufacturer who just simply needs a warehouse and a simple frontage because I'm doing most stuff on the internet, which I think is a massive need and continuing to grow, all of those things can be taken care of via special use permits in the industrial.
Yeah, or permitted outright. Like, a lot of shipping warehouse type would be permitted outright. They don't make a lot of noise. It mostly just trucks coming in and out, getting stuff and getting on going.
Yeah. Perfect.
Hey, John. Why is this, why is the annexation not coming before us?
So I'll speak to it, and if Field wants to chime in at any time, he can too. But that's how our regulation is set up for Post Falls, and I believe supported by state code, is that we are a zoning board, and we're looking at the zoning aspect of that, while the annexation, they're the decider, they're the ones that make the decision on the annexation. And so it is a little clumsy, admittedly, but each part serves their purpose for an annexation.
Yeah, and I think, Ross, I think the main difference here, you have seen annexations come before you before, but whereas this is a city-initiated annexation, this is actually the city seeking the annexation. The procedure is just a little bit different.
Okay. Yeah, my, and this is more of a general question. I'm not sure if it's appropriate based on the circumstances, but I'm curious to know, when the city puts forth an annexation like this, typically, it's put forth by a developer, and the developer pays the infrastructure utility costs. Is the city, is this a city project in that respect as well?
When it comes to the infrastructure cost, that's what's being coordinated with the applicant, the potential developers, and in coordination with the potential urban renewal district, that those items will be discussed as part of the annexation proposal before council in more specifics. But that is kind of more or less how things would be paved in a coordinated effort between the city, urban renewal, and developers.
So in essence, Ross, this is kind of a four-part, it is, but it isn't a four-part. You've got urban renewal involved, you've got us making a determination, forwarding recommendation for zone to the city itself. So everything is at play. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a question. The properties that butt up to this between Corbin and Pleasant View, aren't there a lot of single, or residential properties, kind of larger acreage properties in there?
That is true.
So do we have any, I mean, if we approve this, is there anything to buffer, or, you know, prove or recommend, anything to buffer those properties from a, or industrial properties being put in there?
Yes, we have in our landscaping code section that it's, it doesn't specify, it doesn't specify whether it's a county or city property. What it says is, if an industrial developer develops adjacent to a residential use, then they apply, I believe, a 25-foot-wide buffer between them and that adjacent residential use. And so as they develop a Pleasant View, if that happens to be the current case, then they would apply that buffer.
At that point, would there be, would that come before us, or somebody like for lighting, or, and all that kind of stuff, too?
No, the site plan development, that's done administratively by city staff. We look at our city code, what our standards are, and the directives within the code, and implement them as part of a site plan review, commercial site plan review application.
Thank you.
So the 25-foot buffer is required?
Yep, entitled, yep. It's a landscape buffer section, entitled 18.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Mr. Manley, thank you. We'll turn it over, once we get the technology up and running, to the applicant.
Oh.
That would be the city.
That'd be the city, so, yeah.
So we've basically taken care of that.
Correct.
That's a two-for-one. Amber, public comment, those in favor?
We have one in favor tonight, which is Ray Kimball, and he's with us via Zoom.
Okay. Mr. Kimball?
Good evening, Commissioners. Ray Kimball, for the record, 2104 Columbine Court is my address. So really, what I kind of wanted to, so tonight, I represent one of the property owners that is in that annexation, or in the proposed annexation. It is a, they own a large bulk shipping transportation company, and their goal is to move their national headquarters to Post Falls, to their site. And they would, so that would be moving approximately 300 employees to that site. If successful, this annexation is successful, and they complete that, then they will become one of the largest, I think, one of the top one or two employers in the City of Post Falls. It's really important to note that although there might be, so this Pleasant View corridor is, is developing as industrial today. So we have the Big Horn Industrial Park just on the west side, we have the Rock Pit, Spokane Rock Product Rock Pit, there is Plant Food Center down on Celtae Way in Pleasant View. So the whole corridor, you know, there's the, and of course, then towards the north, there's the aluminum recycling place, and then there's the asphalt storage place. So, you know, it's definitely industrial in nature with, but what you see is, is that, so you see that Big Horn Industrial Park, it's developed as five-acre parcels, and it's developed as five-acre parcels because of septic. So they're only allowed the equivalent of one home worth of sewer. So they're very, very, very limited on the number of employees that they can have without city sewer. So what this annexation is, is that it's the first step toward getting city sewer up to Pleasant View corridor. And what that does is that kicks off the availability for all of those large parcels in that area to attract large industrial-type users to the area. So that's something that this, this area in general is lacking, not just the City of Post Falls. And I'm talking large lot, like, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50, 60-acre parcels. Those are all, it's lacking, especially when you look at the type of transportation access that that Pleasant View corridor has. It's got direct access to I-90, it's got direct access to Highway 53. It is on the city's transportation master plan, it's a principal arterial. It'll be a five-lane road. The ground is out at Prairie Avenue, and Pleasant View has been installed, it's constructed. And so what this has a potential for is attracting a lot of large national and regional industrial businesses to the city that we don't currently have the opportunity to attract.
Forty-five seconds. Mr. Kimball?
Okay. And so from that standpoint, I think industrial is the appropriate zone. It'll develop in that direction, and I urge you to recommend an industrial zone to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Any others wishing to speak in favor?
None.
Okay. Any neutral?
We have two neutral.
Okay. And again, I always like to preface it, for some reason I butcher your name, it is not on purpose, I apologize. We have not wishing to speak and neutral, we have Mark and Kevin, is it Casson? Can property be annexed in at any time soon? Plans for Yukon to be punched through, plans for sewer and water. So those are questions that maybe city wants to address in rebuttal. The other not wishing to speak, remaining neutral, Kurt Roth, it says, is the requested zoning district compatible with the street classification, traffic patterns? Is it existing development, future land use, community plans, geographic and natural feature area? It says no. The Corbin side has close to 30 homes on acreage that isn't compatible with The Corbin side has close to 30 homes on acreage that isn't compatible with industrial. Commercial and high-density residential zoning is assigned along streets with higher road class. It says no. Pleasant View corridor is compatible with commercial, but the Corbin side is not. It goes on and talks about specifically the parts on Corbin. Industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes, but it's only on the Pleasant View corridor. Is requested zone district in accordance with the future land use map? Says no, not as the people who built the area are concerned. And that was all that they had. So do we have anyone else wishing to speak that is neutral?
None.
Any opposed?
None.
Okay. Mr. Manley, do you wish to address in rebuttal any of the questions, thoughts, or concerns?
Yeah, I can make a couple comments here regarding on potential annexation. Annexations locally is done by request of adjacent neighbors. As long as you're adjacent and contiguous with the city of Post Falls, you have a right to ask consideration for annexation into the city of Post Falls. But it takes being contiguous for that ask. The compatibility with streets and uses and staff identified in the staff report that it's consistent with the future land use map, land use designations. Admittedly, the streets as they are today may not be improved to current standards to support industrial, but with development, those streets get improved to current city standards. So that area between Pleasant View and Maguire, as discussed, you would see, and through time and through development, those roads being improved to city standards. Looking at the industrial development, more than likely, I mean, if you had an industrial, if you were shipping, you had no reason to go down any of those other roads other than Pleasant View. I mean, so you would see your traffic utilizing the Pleasant View corridor either north to Highway 53 or to I-90 through Pleasant View interchange to your shipping routes. So hopefully that addressed those concerns, or that would be the staff's comments regarding those.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff at this time? I'm hearing conversation. Vicky, question? Nope, no other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the hearing. Ross, you happen to be right up on top and first, so I'm going to go to you first. Any comments, sir?
This area is already an industrial, it's all industrial use along there for the county. One other use along there is the transfer station and the, I don't think there's any use that isn't industrial along there. I think it's the only real classification that meets, and I do think it'll be a benefit to have some larger parcels that are available for industrial, as well as some less expensive parcels than some of the stuff in Riverbend. And so I think it's a pretty good fit.
Vicky, Joe?
Yeah, it probably is a good fit for there. I just do have some concerns for the residential properties that we'll back up against, but hopefully that will be a heavy consideration when things are built along there, that there's some protection to those homeowners.
James?
Yeah, I agree also. I think it'll be a good fit. Yeah, I do do concerns about the residents there and what uses might be out there, but I think, you know, just giving this a zoning of industrial is step one of 20 for this area of land. And so all that stuff will be worked out in due time. So I think industrial fits for right now.
Okay, Nancy?
I would have to agree with both James and Vicky, Joe, that the concern is the residential that's out there. And we've seen before that sometimes when industrial and residential meet, it doesn't always make a great fit. I think industrial along that corridor, since there already is so much, isn't a bad fit. I just do have the concern with the residential. And however, like Vicky, Joe said, hopefully that's something that can be worked out as the businesses come in and can require enough of a buffer to really protect the properties that are there, the homeowners that are there.
Absolutely. Yeah, I apologize. Unless you've signed up for a public comment, there's no open.
Oh, he's gone.
You need, what do we need to do with that? No, I completely. Field, what do we need to do if we have an individual that did not turn in the paperwork for public comment? Do we need to reopen everything?
You would have to reopen the public hearing, and the applicant would have a chance to rebut any information as well.
Okay. If you want to turn that in, we can reopen everything, and that way your comments will be made, put in the record, and then city can provide any rebuttal if necessary. So if you want to bring that forward, we can get that turned in. So we'll go ahead and reopen. And sir, do you wish to speak publicly? Sir, do you wish to speak?
See, you had asked if there's any opposition.
Yes, I had asked, and there were none. So if you're in opposition, do you, I was going to say, do you wish to speak, though? You would need to come up to the front, state your address? Okay, yeah, perfect. And I apologize for not seeing you. You just need to come up, state your name, address, and then you have four minutes, sir.
It is Dennis Steinbach, 3566 West Green Javene, the dead end portion there. We are opposed to it. Additionally, there are others that are opposed to the development, as well as what was brought up earlier about the buffer zone between industrial. And there are numerous five-acre lots out there that are residential, is primarily what it is on five-acre lots. And so from our point of view, to change it to industrial without providing that buffer zone, and then the next step is to turn our homes into commercial based on the long-term planning. So there is opposition to it. The property's been purchased, obviously, by the development and with the intent of doing this, but there is opposition to it.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate that. Mr. Manley, anything that you want to address with that?
No, I think everything else was said within the, what's been presented.
Okay, all right. Noted for the record. I appreciate it. So at this time, do we have any further questions? Anything that we need to move forward as far as staff clarification?
Could you be a little more specific on, I know that you said that there's a 25-foot buffer that would be required. What kind of a buffer are we talking, are options for buffers? What is going to be required? Just a space, an open space of 25 feet, or is it vegetation?
It's a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees for every 100 feet. I can't quote it off the top of my hand, but I believe it's five deciduous trees and five evergreen trees, plus a number of shrubs every 100 feet within that 25-feet corridor. And it does occur with development. So if no development happens, your life doesn't change. It's when a development occurs, then they would go in, install that to mitigate their use on that site. I could clarify that even though the future land use designate something as commercial, we're not intending on like disoning it that unless someone desired it. So the business commercial designation, once again, has that bandwidth of different uses. It had the residential uses, it had some other commercial uses, so it allows a variety of opportunities if someone wanted to sell their land down the road that could help transition and blend the built environment down the road.
Unfortunately, unless you want to fill out the paperwork and come up and make a statement, you can certainly do that, and that would give the staff an opportunity. If you want to fill out one of those papers really quick, you certainly can. No, they're actually right over here.
Did we close it?
We didn't close it.
Okay, good.
Actually, why don't you, you can come up front. Yeah, but why don't you do this? Come up front. We're going to go.
I just had a question.
We're going to go in reverse order. I need you to state your name and your address.
The Don Banning at 1946 North Corbin Road.
Okay.
So I just had a question, because I know dry ice. Are you talking about them that are taking it over? Because the people that own it live right behind. Are that, is that the main business that's going on? Are you guys going to take over and?
So you can ask the question. We aren't in a position to answer, but when you wrap up your comments, then we'll turn it over for the city, who is the applicant, to answer that.
Okay.
So that's the main question, though?
That was the main question. I was just curious, because I don't know what's going on, and it's kind of, yeah.
Okay.
A little scary.
And then will you do me a favor? When you go to sit down, will you grab one of those forms and fill it out?
Definitely will, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think Bob Seal, I see his face on there. I think he'd like to comment potentially what's going on over there.
Okay, Mr. Seal.
How's it going? Bob Seal, Community Development Director. Yeah, so again, this is big part, it's essentially step one, as was noted, in the potential creation of an urban renewal district. It is driven by the approximately 70-acre parcel on the northern end of this annexation. It is a, basically described as Project Drive. It was utilized, that name has been utilized at the state level through the Department of Labor and jobs plus out of Coeur d'Alene. It is a trucking and transload facility is what they are aiming to construct and begin operations. And, you know, again, as I believe John or Ray had noted, I think Ray did, is that it is going to be one of the largest employers in the area, and actually is going to be one of the larger employers in the state, which is why there was support for it at the state level. So it is not the dry ice. I'll let John rebut that, but this corridor, and while, you know, we are looking at an industrial zoning, you know, along that eastern side of Pleasant View, it does kind of work in the sense of, you know, it is not the entire section. We did not want to try and currently zone everything between Pleasant View and Corbin as that. That was not our goal. And, you know, while the future land use map shows as a transitional area, those other areas will be determined in the future as they initiate their own annexations through whatever process they may decide to go. Again, this is focused on the Pleasant View corridor area, and as noted, it may not be the most applicable to add additional properties further to the east. But, you know, this is something that we have been working on now for two, well, we've been working on this project in particular for about two years. This has been brought up multiple times over the past, I believe, 14 years. And it is also again a step one, because there is additional land to the north of Prairie that we will be coming back with in the next couple of months. But that's just kind of what I had to say for this evening.
Okay.
Any questions?
Mr. Manley, anything to address additional?
No, once again, I want to hone things back to that review criteria. You know, we're looking at those six review criteria as the basis for the recommendation and consistency with the future land use map and existing development and future plans of the corridor. So pretty much all I need to add is just, that's what we're looking at, is that review criteria.
Okay. And two things just to address, just so everybody knows, in the future, whenever you come in, if you do wish to speak, or if you have comments or things, grab that piece of paper, fill it out, and turn it in up front. We want to hear everyone's comments. We want everybody to get their input, and so I appreciate that and apologize if anybody got missed, but I think we got everybody taken care of. James, Vicky, Joe, Ross, in a virtual world, any additional comments or thoughts? Field, you had your hand up. You have a question or comment?
Yeah, I would just say, Ryan, go ahead and close the public hearing again.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that out.
And then I would just run through, run through all the commissioners again to see if they have anything else to add.
Vicky, Joe, anything to add?
No, thank you.
James?
No.
Ross?
I would just add that I know we want to try to be considerate of existing uses and neighbors, and it's always a tough, a tough bill of goods there, because there's always some sort of a conflicting use. But I would reiterate that Post Falls needs more, you know, we need more diversity in use than just single and multifamily residential. And this is an area that's probably is we have in our area to bring that. And I think it's a big benefit to have jobs available to the people that live here rather than everybody leaving to go to work.
Vicky, anything else to add? Vicky was good. Nancy?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. I think the one thing that Mr. Manley did mention that I want to stress, and I think sometimes we fail to forget, is with development comes improvements. I know there's always concern with transportation. I know that Mr. Melvin, Mr. Polis gets beat up at the meetings wanting to get clarification, but I think that's important, that with some of this development, much-needed development, not only comes, you know, sewer, water, the necessary things for continued growth, but also the road improvements that affect the individuals as well. So that being said, if any of the commissioners would like to make a motion, I would entertain it at this time. Anyone? Again, for clarification, that would be either to recommend or not recommend industrial to city council as zone.
Ryan, I'll do it. I move to recommend approval, project, eight NNX 0006 2020, finding that it's consistent with comprehensive planning and zoning codes and facts and findings in the staff report with a zoning designation of industrial.
Okay, call for a vote.
We need a second.
Oh, good point. Is there a second?
No, I would second Orion.
Okay. Now let's call for a vote.
Okay. Carrie? Carrie?
Yes.
Schlaauer?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Campy?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes. Okay, so moved forwarded to city council. Mr. Manley, do we have any new business to see?
There's none.
Any administrative or staff reports?
None as well.
Commissioner comments, anything for the good of the order? I would have a comment. I look very forward to the point that we can all be together in the same room. We love technology, but we don't love technology. If there's nothing else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Adjourn.